En esuve, en jivon nirallo En esuve, en belan nirallo En esuve, en jivon nirallo En esuve, en belan nirallo Sio ni talayil velicham nirallo Nisaram oogantan nee dunkalipri Sio ni talayil velicham nirallo Nisaram oogantan nee dunkalipri
Alayriya! Katthodiya parishutha namathukumai muntavada
Glory be to the Holy Name of the Lord
Naapati mune ram sangeedam, rendu, moondru, naangavaasanagali vasikko
Psalm 43 verses 2, 3 and 4
En aranavee devanee, yen enne kalli bidigiri Satravinial odukappattu, naan yen dukkathirunne thiriyaveendu Ummade velichathayum, ummade satthiathayum, anipierulum Avaygal enne nadathii, ummade pasutthak paruvathathirku Ummade vaasasthalangalukku, enne kondupovadaaga Appothen naan devanide fiddangal andeekku Enakkha aanandham aguchaya irukka devanidathirku, prevesipen Devanee, en devanee, ummai swaramanala taaltudipen
Katthodiya parishutha namathukumai muntavada
Glory be to the Holy Name of the Lord
Sanghida karan, inge devaninokki, oru vinnappamaga, indha sangeedatay eradukara
The Psalmist is making a request toward God in the Psalm
Avanudiyavalvil, palapadigal, devanaal, anumadikappadara
There were many paths which were led by God in his life
Andha padigalil pogumbadudu, avan devaninokki, manradugare Oru vinnappandhan, indha sangeedamaga, edhappadukarada
When he had gone through this path, it is this Psalm which he has written when he was going through such afflictions
Sillan aankal, avan dukkathoodu thirindha oru kaalam, avanukirundara
There were certain days when he had to lean in the days of sorrow
Avan dukkathoodu thirindha kaalanagali, satravinial odukappadha kaalanagali
There were times when he was afflicted by his enemies and was walking in sorrow
Avanukullaiye, kattar namai kalli bidigararo, namai vittu velagivittaro Endharana, selakkelvigeel, eluppappadha oru nairam
In himself itself, there was a question which was arising with, the Lord has forsaken or has forgotten him
Appudi vedanayoodu, avan thirindukundukumadudu, kattari noke kerkaran Kattavee, ummadiyavelichathayum, ummadiyasaathiyathayum, enakkaha anippi arulum
When he was with such pain growing about, he asked the Lord, "O Lord, send out their light and thy truth"
Avaygal enne nadathii, ummadiyavparishutha paruvathathirku, ummade vaasasthalangalukku, enne kondupovadaaga
Let them lead me, let them bring me unto the holy hill and to that tabernacle
Indha satravinial odukappattu, avan indha vedanayile, thukkathile thirindukundukumadudu Avanndiyavalkai, oru irulaga mariyavattada
When he was oppressed of the enemy and he was walking in sorrow, his life became a darkness
Priyamanavee, dukkam endhada, oru irul sultha oru sulnalai
Sorrow is a darkening situation
Ilavta, satravinial thakappadukare, oru sulnalai endhada, oru irul sultha oru nelavaram
Or the attack of the enemy is a situation of darkness
Eppudu velicham maregharado, appodu irul kabikkulugare, nam bumiile kaanayiyelum
Whenever light is going down, you can see that the darkness is coming to the earth
Ingay, sanghida karan, tanudiyavalvil, oru irul sultha padigalile, avan kodandhu kadandupovavindhiyada
Here we see the Psalmist going through the path of darkness
Yobu gude, oru utthamandhan, anala avanudiyavalkailum, ibripattaa padigal, anumadikappadada, nam parkamudiyam
Even Job, who was an upright person, in his life also such paths were admitted
Anala appipattaa sulnalagali, thanakkavelicham kettachada, avan cholugarana
But in times of like this, he said that he has got light
Yobu 29 moondray nam parkumbadudu
Reading in Job 29 verse 3
Avar, avar deebum, en talayin mel prakashithada
His candle shine upon my hand
Avar aruliyavelichathinaal, naan irulai kadanduponeenindre, yobu 29 le, moondle, tanne kurithi cholugarana
In Job 29 3, he says, that when by his light I have walked through darkness
Andha deebum, andha velicham, avare irulai kadandupoge, avanukoduvisayada
That candle, the light, made him to walk through the darkness
Katthodiya parishutha namathukumai muntavada
Glory be to the Holy Name of the Lord
Idalirundu nam, enna vilangikolugarana
What to be understood from this?
Kattar indha naankalile, namakkaha, selakariyingle anippinadaan, nam, indha irulai kadandusalla iyelam
Only if the Lord is going to send certain things towards us, then we can cross through darkness
Kattar anupavittal, nam undrumaiyeyi iyeladu
If the Lord does not send, it's not possible with the Lord
Ivan yen velichathai kerkaran
Why is he asking for light?
Indekinkude, manidavalvil, palavidangali, irul sultha oru anuvam, andukundae irukaradu
Even today in man's life, we can see many darkness surrounding him
Priyamanavee, velicham, evalu, pagalikkay evalu nairamo, adu vall, irulikkum oru nairam irukaradu
As much as there is time for the day, even so there is time for night
Indekinkude, irul, pal, indha kaalivalile, ningal vendrukareerakai
Even some of you have come in darkness in this place this morning
One ru irul, matru ru irulin adhikaram
One is darkness, and the other is authority of darkness
Paamum oru irul
Sin is a darkness
Paam, maranam oru irul
And this is darkness
Ippidi palavidamani irulai kurithu, nam vedathale, padikamudiyam
Like this, we can read of many darkness in the word of God
Dukkam oru irul
And sorrow is darkness
Satravinirul, satravin poratum oru irul
An oppression of the enemy is a darkness
Ippidi patta, palavidamana, irulin padigalile, nam pogavindhiyadukum
Like this, we have to traverse through the path of darkness
Anala, indha irulaya, namdiddyavalkayaaga mayumadudu, indha irul, namel adhikaram sulatha arambikarada
But when darkness becomes a light, then this darkness becomes to overcome us
Kolosier mudalama adhikaram, 13 avasanatim badi parkumbadudu
Colossians 1:13
Irulin adhikaratunindhu, devan namibidhalayaaki nar
The Lord has delivered us from the clutches of darkness
Christianavalkai endhada, irul sultha valkaiyala, irulin adhikaratulindhu, vidupattaa oru valkai
Their Christian life is not the life of darkness, but being delivered from the path of darkness
Katthodiya parishutha namathukumai muntavada
Glory be to the Holy Name of the Lord
Ingay, ivan cholugarana, andavare, enakkaha, rendu kariyathai anippi arulum
He asked God to send two things
One ru velicham, matru ru satthiyam
One is light, and the other is truth
Avan indha rendu kariyingle, inkerkaran
He asked for two things
Indha rendu kariyathim, enakkaha anupum, avaygal enne nadathattu
You send off two things for me and let them lead me
Appodu, naan ummadiyavparishutha paruvathathikondu seruvai
And then will I come to that holy hill
Aduttadaaga, naan ummadiyavasaasthalangalukku, vandu seruvai
And nextly, I will come to that tabernacle
Priyamanavee, palakariyingle, vedathale, anupumbadiyana, kariyingle cholappadukaradu
Dear beloved, there are many things which are sent to, sent out in the word of God
Enenna kariyingle anippi irundhalum, anala, indha irundu kariyinglekku maatharam, migundha satthiundu endharae, thaaviidu sanghida karan, arindirundha
Whatever he might send, only these two things have more power, this is what the Psalmist David had known
Vedathin adipattile parkumbadudu, naan unakkum munbaha, tuthanay anupuvain, nengara varthaya, ningal palayedangalile, padithuparkala
Under the aspect of the word of God, we see that he will send his angel at many times
Anala, ingay, avan tuthanay anupumindhu, andavare, inkerkavillai
But he did not request God to send the angel
Indhika anegar, enakkaha, oru tuthanay anupumindhu, jebikararegal, adu tavarum ala
Today, many of them are asking God to send his angel, it's not wrong
Malgiya mune ram adhikaram mudalama avasanatile, idho, naan en tuthanay, unakkum munbaha anupugare
Malachi 3:1, we see that I send my angel before thee
Ippidi allam varthigale, ningal palayedapattile, palayedangalile, parkamudiyam
Even like this, verses, you can see in the Old Testament, many places
Palayedapattale, unakkam munbaha, enidu tuthanay anupuvain, avdeesamugathile, ni gavanamaa, irukavindhu, cholappadukaradu
In the Old Testament, it is said that I will send my angel before thee, and you should be very careful for him
Anala, indha manidhan kerkaran, enakkarrendu kariyathin, nee raanupavendam
But this man asked God to send two things
Hospitalappidikare pillavandhu, thakappadakak, enakkadressa anippi vuddinga
And the child studying in the hospital, will ask the father to send dress
Pananippi vuddinga
Send money
Indha bookku vangi anippi vuddinga
You get this book and send for me
Enakkusweet vangi anippi vuddinga
Get me sweets and send
Ilavta, tinbandha vangi, kudutha anippi vuddinga
Or you get me eatables and send
Ibbalak kerkaradu, onamath, ellarkamai, terinja oru kariyanda
We all know things which are happening like this
Andha pillake, enna tevayyo, adu kerkaradu
What the child requires is asking
Arumianavee, indha viswasa payanathile, oru aanmiga payanathile, oru devanidiyavpilake, avasiamanadu rendu
Dear children of God, what we need in the spiritual life is, in this journey, we need two things
Oru saatharana meluguvartiyavaitukundu, indha markathile, ni poivudamudiyadu
Keeping an ordinary candle, you cannot go in this religion
Kattarodeyavelicham arundhal, than indha padigalile, ni pogavindiyam
Only if you have the light of the Lord, you can go this path
Idha tandheyavalvil, anupavithu, palarodeyavalvil, kattukundu, indha thaaviidu cholugarana, andavare, enakkaha, nee rendu kariyathai anupum
This David learned from his life and many of their lives, and says God to send two things
Indha aravanin mudivile, unggalukum gude samayam gudukappadhum, ningalum idhay vinnappathay eradukalam, idhay anupavati, ningalum techukalalam, paychivikalam
In the close of the meeting also, you will be given time, you too can ask for these two things and practice it in your life
Avan kerkaran, enakkavelichathai anupum
And he asked God to send his light
Continuva, naan irulaiye, pathukundu varukare
I am continuously seeing darkness
Oru kaalam, enakkay, velichamana, oru kaalam, irundada
There was a time when it was light
Endraki, enmela, abhishekam eranginada
But since the day anointing came upon
Andrailirundu, indha irulin vallamigal, enno odhu poradukaradu
From then, day is the power of darkness driving with it
Adhu, singhathin vadivil vandada
That is coming through like this lion
Karadiin vadivil vandada
That is coming in the form of bear
Kohliathin vadivil vandada
It is coming in the form of goliath
Sowulodeyavadivil vandada
It is far coming in the form of soul
Felisterkodeyavadivil vandada
It is coming in the form of Philistine
Ippidi, avan varusiyadu cholikundae, eepogarana
Like this, he is repeatedly saying
Oru kattathile, tanudiyavpilake, avanukirulaga, mararambiktarakai
And in one situation, his children became his darkness
Avanndiyapadaytalevane, avanuka, avirudamaga, eliminaan
And his armor bearer also became his enemy
Avanndiyara, asariene, avanukirudamaga, eliminaan
And the priest also rose against him
Ippidi, palavidamana, irulai, avan kadandhu kadandhu, palavedanivilile, ponnadhal, kadaisiyaka, avan kertpada, kattavee, ummadiyavelichathai, enakkaneerandaramai, anippi arulum
Like this, he is going through many paths, and forsaken of all, finally, he asked God to send his light
Enantala, yobu insarathara, kertukumadi, yempaditikare iyelam
Because he would have heard of this story, and would have learnt it
Yobu undiyavalkai, avan kertukalama
He would have heard the words of Job
Irulai kadandupona, anegar, devanndey janangludiyavalkai, avan kandrukalaam, kertukalama
He would have heard of the story and history of the people traversing the darkness
Anala, kadaisiyaka, unndivinnappathile, avan parkumbadu, ivan kerkaran, velichathai, enakkay, anippi arulum
Finally, in his quest, he is asking God to send his light
Indha velicham, edhar kaha, anupupadavendhu, inkerkaran
Why is he asking to send out his light?
Indhiki, velichathai anuppinada, adu namay nadathum
Today, if he should send his light, then it will lead them
Oru nachatharam, andha saastriyalai, alagaga, nadathikundu vandada
A star could lead the old wise men brutally
Andha velichathai, kandu dana, avanukundae, irundakai
It was saying that like they came forward
Priyamanavee, unggalai, ettineve, indha velicham nadathavendhu, virmasriyakai
Dear beloved, how many of you desires this light to lead you?
Oru selakudumaththi purushan nadathukarana, oru selakudumaththi manavin nadathukarana
Some families are led by the husband, some families are led by wife
Oru selakpurushanai, manavin nadathukarana, oru selakmanaviye, purushan nadathukarana
Some husbands are leading their wife, and some wives are leading the husbands
Onggalai, palavidangali, palavallamigal nadathukaradu
And many powers are leading you in different paths
Sella ray pisas nadathukarana
And some people are led by Satan
Sella ray, pis, sella, soyamai nadakkarakai
Some of them are walking of themselves
Sella, palavidamana, poothugangali, nadathupadukarakai
Some of them have been dealt by different doctrines
Tamille choluvana, sella rukusolputtiyulae, soyabuthiyum, illa
Some of them say, that they do not have the knowledge of their own, neither of what is told
Yaar enna sonnala, kuthalaya diyadee povanga
Whatever they say, they will shake their head and go
Priyamanavee, adu oru valkaiyala
That's not a life
Mudalavada, devanidathirundhu, velicham, namakkah avasiam
Firstly, we need light from God
Velichathai anippi arulum
Send out their light
Avaygal enakkay, enne nadathattu
And let them lead me
Ni neerimanaseerundhal
If we be a just
Unakkaha, velicham, viddikappadukaradu
The light is being shown for you
Thonni thiyalam sangeedathe, nam parkumbadudu
In Psalm 97
11 avasanathale
Was 11
Neerimanukaha, velicham, viddikappadukarada
Light is shown for the righteous
Neerimanudiyavpadi kahave, kattar, velichathai vachirukar, neerimanukahave, velichathai, kattar, viddichu vachirukar
For the path of righteousness, and for righteousness, the Lord kept light
Aravata, neerimuligal, nam parkumbadudu
It is why reading in Proverbs
Neerimanudiyavpadi, naduppagal, irukaradu, andha suriyanudiyavvelicham bolare
The path of righteousness is like the sun which is in the midday
Appalu prakashamaga, neerimanudiyavpadi, irupadaaga, vedam cholukaradu
Such a bright life is the path of righteousness
Neerimanudiyavpadi endhada, adu vichyasmamana
The path of righteousness is different
Neerimuligal, naangama adhikaram, 18 avasanathay parkumbadudu
Proverbs chapter 4, verse 18
Neerimanudiyavpadi, naduppagal, varekkum, adigamadigamai, prakashikare, suriyaprakasham bolare
The path of the justice is a shining light that shines more and more in the perfect day
Anala, midhal, naam indha padigale, neerimangalai, mariyal, namkakavelicham vikappadukaradu, indha velicham, namay nadathum
Therefore, if we be righteous in this path, then there is light kept for us, and this light will lead us
Indha velicham, namay nadathumadudu, nam, irulai, sulabamaga, kadakkala
When this light is leading us, then we can easily cross the darkness
Isaravil janangal, elittin parakaramaga, oru payanathile, kaanappadakai
Children of Israel literally were found in a journey
Elittinbadiyana, oru kaanane, noke, avankal payanappadukarakai
They were turning towards a little canon
Andha padigale, avanlukku, endhuvidamana, velicham, unkakadayadu
In that path, they had no light at all
Iravum payanam dorandadu, pagalum payanam dorandadu
The journey prolonged in the day and in the night
Avanlukku ponnadu, vanantharangai
They went through wilderness
Manidha, nadamattam, achcha, padigalile, avanlukku ponnadu
They walked through paths where man was not walking at all
Antha aankalile, avanlukku velicham gatinaadu yaar
It was on those days who gave them light
Yaatrakamum, 13 avasanathay, nam parkumbadudu
When we read in Exodus, chapter 13
21 avasanathay parkumbadudu
Was 21
Avanlukku, iravum, pagalum, valinadakkupadukudumbadike, kattar, pagalil, avanlukku valinadathmeegas stambathilum, iravil, avanlukku velicham gatta, akknis stambathilum, avanlukku munshendra
The Lord went before them by a day in the pillar of clouds to lead them the way, and by night in a pillar of fire to give them light
Pagille, bayangaramana, veyl
In the day, it was hot sun
Veylil ukkaram
The hotness of the sun
Andha janangal, nadakamudiyadu
The people cannot walk
Kattar ennamuninara
What did the Lord do?
Andha pagille, avanlukku nadathradukku, meegas stambathakatleetadu
And he commanded the pillar of cloud for that day
Avan ilaiparadalu, andha veylin ushnath, ariyada, vare, kattaravali nadathikundae, endhada
And they will with rest walk in the pillar of cloud that they may not see sun
Sella nairangalile, iravil, avanlukku payanappadavindhiyendhada
Sometimes, they have to journey at night
Ilavta, yenge avdu, paalayam erangavindhiyendhada
Or they have to end camp in some place
Vedam enna cholukaradu
What is the word of God saying?
Iravil, avanlukku velicham gatta, akknis stambathila, kattarinindukundarundha
The Lord himself was standing, and the night as a pillar of fire to give them light
Akknis stambath, chonna, yereyavuna, readybunniyidu, avar, sari, focuspannay, indha light addi, avin chulutupala, avare, akknis stambathil, avanlukku munshendra
Pillar of light and fire means, it's not a light where it is focused to give them light, but he himself went before them as a pillar of fire
Kattare, andha edathle, velichamaga, akknis stambathila, indrukundarundha
The Lord himself as a light was standing in the pillar of fire
Idhitan, sanghida karan, 27 avasanathile, parkumbadudu
That is what when Psalm says in Psalm 27 verse 1
Kattar, en velichamum, en rakshipum aanavare, inkerkarana
The Lord does my light and my salvation, he says
Arumianavee, unggalidiyavalvin, velichamaga, kattare, ningal konduvarunga
Dear beloved, bring the Lord as a light in your life
Indha padigale, unggalki, irul jenbadukarado, andha edathle, ningal oruvisay indre, andavare, akknis stambathila, velicham gatinaavare, kattare, neere, en velicham, inkukupudungal, avar, unggalukku velichamai, vandunirpa
Whichever path you might find darkness in your life, then you ask God to come as a pillar of fire, and give you light, and the Lord will be your light
Arumianavee, unggalidiyavalkailay, ettineve, irul sultha padigale, indha payanathile, poivukundukareerakai
Dear beloved, how many of you are traveling through paths of darkness in your life?
Devan unakkay, akknis stambathila, munshallumudiyaga, unavalvilay, velicham gattumudiyaga, andavare, ummadiyavelichathai, enakkay anupumindhu, indha kaalivalile, ningal vinnappamavindhu, ivirilaga
You ask God that God might come and be a pillar of fire to you, and give you light in your life
Andavate kuputte kelinga, kattavee, ummadiyavelichathai anupum
You ask the Lord to send light
Appidi, ethneve, sachi cholirukarana
Like this, many of them have testified
Elittin padagama, parakaramaga, oru sagodarinu, oru biriyat, thikathriyada, oru kaatla, sikikundadu
Literally, a brother was caught into a thick forest without any direction
Avar, epudhu, namdiddyavmissionle, oru pastoraga, irukaradu
He is now a pastor in our mission
Avar, appodu, ulithukvaravillai
He did not come to ministry then
Idukki la, idukki, endhara, andha, malai pradesathale, tanudiyedathikku pogumbadiyaga, avan ponnadu
He was
Kerala, idukki district, noru edhaka
He went into the thick forest of Idukki
Ah, angay ponnabadudu, avar, innan, iritterukula, poirlan, antu ponnadu, anala, adukul, iritticci
He thought it, he can cross the path, but it became dark till then
Avar, kengabonun, teriyalai
He did not know where to go
Andha, andha, malai pradesangale, chuttaka, abdi, irittinna, adutthi, enna stepla, irukkunna, enna, unume teriyada, oru edhak
The mountain places were full of darkness, that no simple place will be seen if you have to step forward
Ippoy, enga kaalvagiradu, enga kaalvagakudadu
Where to step now, or where not to step now?
Kaladu bakkamaa, nera bonuma, edathu bakkamaa, enga pallaa, enga medu, unume teriyada, oru, nirukamana, oru sulnalai
He did not know, he was in that path of distance, where he could not know where to go, left or right, or it is a low place or a high place
Anala, nalaa, oru, aavikuriyamanidhan
But he was a spiritual man
Appodu, remba, deviagamagatham, unndiyavalkai, amethu vaidukundadu
He had established his life divine that time itself
Avar schoolle, oru valabath, oru, avar teacheraga, vali see that
He was working as a teacher in a school
Schoolle, oru chinnaprechniyayidchi
There was a small problem in the school
Remba kandipana, nabari vara
He was a very conditioned person
Ah, remba kandipana, oru nabar
He was full of conditions
Anala, ellarum, payapudavanga
Therefore, all of them will be afraid
Oru payan, avar remba kondishitar
He conditioned a person, a boy like a girl
Ivan thangirindhu, faithomla
He was staying in the faithom
Andha payan, rendu, moondu, vare, kootti, chai, vare, adikirukkaaga, chanda podukkaga, teacher adikirukka, student, rendu, moondu, payan, pariyalangal, kootti, faithomay vandita
That boy gathered two or three or elder persons, in order to be the teacher, kind to the faithom itself
Appo, ivan, innoru viswasi, naan faithomle, irundukarana
Then he and another believer was in the faithom
Appo, vandhu, vaakvadam, bani, ivan adikaramstha
And they came inside and began to beat him
Andha viswasi, ivan, innu, adivangarana
And that believer, and he was getting the beatings
Avan cholukarana
He said
Engal adichum, vadi, teriyana, engamela, adiuladu, anala, avan, rendu, adikiravala, kupra, kupra, uluva, potthu, potthu, ningal, oru, touch, vunva, potthu, uluva, karse, enni, avanle, odi, peta, enna, nanamichin, avan, dhan, kerkana
We did not know that they were beating us, but they were beating, we know, but we did not have received any pain, but suddenly, they will beat, and they themselves will fall, and after some time, they went
Engal adikavadu, teriyam, anala, engamela, adiuladu, dammu, kerkho, anala, avan, rendu, vare, potthu, potthu, kela, uluva, trippi, vandva, avan, unnu, odaadu, enna, vaatthi, adichtha, trippi, yosiba, trippi, adiba, trippi, uluva, karse, motthama, ellar, nalan, oru, odi, peta
And the phone of them, they came, and they continuously beat, but we only hear the blows, and they will fall down, and again, they will rise up and beat, and again, they will fall, finally, they all fled, they only know what happened
Andha kaatla, ivan nikkumadu
When he was standing in the forest
Siti, vandhu, oru, torch, chammaran
Suddenly, he felt that the man was lighting a torch
Ah, oru, oru velicham
A light
Avan, abdi, followpannadu
He just began to follow the light
Ivan varavandi, edhak, varekkam, andha velicham, vandada, alipar, manushan, kadayadu, torch, kadayadu, velicham, kadayadu
And to the place he has to come, there was a light which was coming for him, after that, there was no man or any torch
Ippidi, elittin parakaramana, irul sultha valile, oru manidhanukka, devan, deebamaga, vandu, valikattuvar, anala, unggal, aanmiga payanathile, nichiyamaga, andha velicham, varumbadudu, nee, sulabamaga, irulai kadandupovai
Like this, literally, when you are going through darkness for a little person, if he should come and give his light, then in your spiritual journey, when you are going through darkness, definitely, God will come light
Isaravil janangal, 40, 40 varunam, vanantharathale, kattanaratinadu
The people of Israel, the Lord led them for forty years in the wilderness
Andha 40 varsha, kalychya, adhul, kootataya, alichtha
After forty years, the Lord destroyed a group of people
Adi yen, enra, oru keldvi, ellar, kule, elumbo
And there arose a question as to why
Adukkakarana, dharma
What's the reason?
Kattaru, seyalak, kannaarak, kandavargal, anala, kattar, kethamadi, vaalala
They saw the works of the Lord by their own eyes, but could not live, did not live according to it
Appidi, kandukumunnaala, parvona, vadaittha, ivan, kandala, patthavaga
They saw the Lord tormenting Pharaoh before their eyes
Kandukumunnaala, meegas stambath, appidi, anupavitha, varakai
They had experienced the pillar of fire
Akknis stambha, appidi, velicham gatti, parvona, udiyasayane, appidi, niruthinadu
They saw the pillar of fire, and they stopped the chariot of Pharaoh
Appidi, parvona, udiyasayana, varada, alavale, indha akknis, appidi, tadutukundae, endhada
The pillar of fire was hinting that the host of Pharaoh could not draw them
Kandukumunnaala, sangal, rendhaka, pelandada
Before their eyes, the red sea was split in two
Kandukumunnaala, sinai, malai, magime, eranginada
Before their eyes, the glory descended upon their eyes
Ovar, naalu, aanathulindhu, oligaram, mannavay, pusitha
Every day, the age of man after heaven
Ellam, pathu, palagi, andavara, anupavichu, rusichu, unma, illa, nona, avan, ellar, vanantharathale, alichtha
When they saw the experience and tasted God in the wilderness, and they were not faithful, the Lord destroyed them in the wilderness
Kandum, avan, sariyana, valkai, vaalala
They saw, but did not live a right life
Priyamanavee, namakkay, indha naankalile, irulai, velicham kadandupoge, namakkavelichathai, anupumudiyaga, manradavindhi, nairam, vanduvattada
Dear beloved, it is time for us that we have to plead God to send us light that may cross the darkness
Indha olathralle, endha velichamum, indha aanmiga padigal, namakkuduvisayadu
No light in this world can help us go through the spiritual life
Yaatrakamum, 35, 14, parkumbadudu
In Exodus 35 verse 4
Angay, oru velicham, cholappadukaradu
There is a set of a light
Adi, enna velicham
What is that light?
Adi, parishutha, salaathile, velicham gudukaradu
That is the light which is given in the holy sanctuary
Asaripukoodarathile, velicham gudupada
It is giving the light in the tabernacle
14, velicham gudukum, kuttu, vellakke
It is the light, a candle which is giving light
One ru, kattare, unakkavelichamai, vandu, unne, valinadathava
Firstly, the Lord himself coming as his light
Avare, unakkavelichamai, velipadukada
He himself revealing and setting his light
Rendavada, kuttu, vellakku, gudukum, velicham
Secondly, the light of the candlestick
Ah, angak choliyakaradu, velicham gudukum, kuttu, vellakke
There is a set, the candlestick which gives its light
Unudiyavpadi, nee kadandupoge
For you to cross through darkness
One ru, kattar, unakkavilakkaai, ilavta, velichamai, varukarana
One thing is the Lord coming as a light
Irandavada, indha irulai kadandupoge, sabai, unakkoru, vellakke
And secondly, to cross through the darkness, the church is a light
Indha kuttu, vellakke, edhak, kaanvikaradu
What does this candlestick show?
Vellipadutthal, mudalama adhikaram, 20 avasanathay, parkumbadudu
Revelation, chapter 1, verse 20
Andha pun, kuttu, vellakkugal, indha ragasyam, enna
What is the mystery of the golden candlesticks?
Neekandha, yel, kuttu, vellakkugalum, yel, sabai galam
The seven golden candlesticks which you saw, the seven churches
Oru manidhanudiyav, aanmiga payanathile, avanukku velicham, endhumaanala, avan sabaila, irundhal, than, andha velicham, kadayakaradu, yenandhal, indha kuttu, vellakku, velicham gudukum, kuttu, vellakke
If in the spiritual life, if one has to see the light, then he has to be found in the church, because this church is the candlestick
Ah, vedam cholukaradu, andha yel, kuttu, vellakkugalum, yel, sabai galam
The word of God says that the seven candlesticks are the seven churches
Idhu, dam, parishutha salaathuke, ilavta, parishutha salaathuke, neevuke, noke, pogarana, mayanujanuke, valkaile, velicham gudukkukudiyasakti
That is why the people who are journeying towards the holy sanctuary, this is the light which is giving in their life
Alaladu, thaaviidhi, sonna, kattavee, enakkay, neer, velichathai, anupum
That is why David says, "Lord, you send out their light"
Andha naankalile, paranga, naathangal, oru tirkathrisi, irundha
In those days, there was a prophet called Nathan
Adu, dam, avandha, avanlukku munbaha, oru parishuthavanai, jivitha, oru manidhan
He was the only person who lived a holy life for him
Indha prechna, vandhal, naathangan, varuva
In any problem, that Nathan will come
Naladu, nanandhal, varuva, ketthadu, nanandhal, varuva
Whether good thing or bad things happen, he will come
Avan, dam, correct, ivan, lead, paniyata
He was the only person leading him correctly
Ah, avan, tavarunna, kondishiruvaa
He will correct him if he is wrong
Naladun, sonna, avukudiyana, ipa
If it is good, he will stand with him
Andha tirkathrisi, varada, pachathale, Salem, unkupadaviyadu, keshirukadu
If that prophet did not come, Solomon would not attain his position
Andraki, avan, oru, avanidadathakudiyav, oru, sakthi, ulav, oru, parishuthavanaga, irundha
He was a holy saint who could lead him those days
Patsebal, vishyathale, tavarunna, odane, odane, vandu, kadidukundu, mudalamanisha, avandha
In the matter of patshiba, when he went wrong, he was the one who came and condemned him first
Andha pillai, vadi, pottu, kavalamaga, irundukumadudu, ivan, ubavasi, jebichaa, avan, sonna, ena, ubavasam, mora, pillai, sahu, kattar, cholitara, sonna
When that child was sick and so death, then, when he fasted and prayed, he said, "Why are you fasting?", the Lord said that he will surely die
Andraki, thaaviidukku, velicham gudukaradu, anala, kuttu, vellakkaaga, andraki, andha naathan, kaanappadha, avan, oru, devanidiyav, manidhan
That Nathan was found as a candlestick to David, to give him light, he was the man of God
Palayedapattale, oru, kuttu, vellakke, asaripukoodarathikku, velicham gudukum, anala, puriyedapattu, sabai, oru, manidhanukka, velicham gudukaradu, indha aanmiga padigale, irulai kadandupoge
Even the Old Testament, a candlestick will get light through the tabernacle, even so, in the New Testament, this church will give you light to go in the spiritual life
Idalam, manasalavachikadu, tar, remba, shata, kerkaran, kattavee, velichathai, anupum
Keeping all this in his mind and thought, he asked God to send the light
37 avasanathay, parkumbadudu
In 37 Psalm 6
Saathangisa, garan, enna cholukarana
What does the Psalmist say?
Unnee, velichathai polavum, unnyaayam, patta, pagalai polavum, ilangapanduva
He shall bring forth the righteousness as a light, and the judgment as a new day
Ikkay, cholappadukadu, anala, indha velicham, endhada, nee, ikonvikaradu
The light shown here is righteousness
Ummadiyavvelichathai, anippi, arulumadu, kattavee, ummadiyavnee, enakkay, anupumindhu, artha
If he has to send his light, then Lord said out their righteousness, is the meaning
Adi, devanudiyavnee, enna
What is the righteousness of God?
Yanasana, midupadu, un padigale, oru, velicham
Taking baptism gives you light in your path
Ippidi, devanidiyavnee, niravatuvu, namakkay, etthada, irukaradu
It is good for us to fulfill the righteousness like so
Devanidiyavrajyam, pusipum, gudipum, alla, adu, needyum, samadanamu, parishuthavinal, undagum, sandoshamindhu, paralogarajyathin, taivigat, thanme, echuliyarukaradu
For the kingdom of God does not meet and drink, but righteousness and peace and joy in the Holy Ghost, this is the heavenly kingdom
Neennee, kikilpadiyamadudu, aduve, unne, velichamaga, maati, aduve, unne, irulai kadandupoge, unakkuduvisayam
When you should obey to the righteousness, it will turn your darkness, and will make you to
Sariyana, yanasana, avan, kudumathal, irukaradu, sabaththa, vairu, pudingidu
Right baptism will take the curse uprooted from your life
Ningal, pastor, aruldas, avale, ningal, partrukalama, kertukalama, kandrukalama
You would have known about Pastor Aruldas, heard of him, and would have seen him
Avan, thutukulile, gude, oru, pastoraga, center, pastoraga, irundha
He was a center pastor until he got into
Avan, appodu, yanasana, gudukumadu, annago, gude, nippa
When he gives baptism, he will stand with him
Al, periyat, thoti, aruk
That will be a big tank
Andha yanasana, irukaravangala, erangavana
And those of them who take baptism will get down
Aduvarikar, remba, teliva, livingi, satthiathalan, kettu, amen, innu, me, paavunjeyamata, ellan, sulidu, tham, ulavavuva, thotti, irundha, eranginadu, bata, ellan, aadu
Until then, he would come make a confession, and say, that he will know more sin with a determination he will get in, but when he gets into the tank, he will be shaking
Oru tripu, batiyana, andha, tanikulay, yalit, brothers, yalit, sisters, eranguyutukaradu, varusiyak, gudukavara, ivan, tanikulay, erangyachi, oru, naal, jisagodri, naal, jispriveer, sarra
One, seven, eight brothers got into the tank, and he also went inside, and four, five brothers and sisters both dancing
Ella, aadu
They were all shaking like that
Ah, naang, ivan, enna, phonnadu, varadu, ellan, aadu, arana, enna, avan, ah, correct, sariyana, nathal, vanditiga, ah, iban, gudukavara, adukumal, aadi, mulchirmu
And he said, "It's good that you've come at the right time, I'm going to give baptism, you should dance before that and finish"
Enang, yanasana, edhuttha, ivan, mel, unkak, enna, kadayadu, ivan, mel, ivan, mel, unkak, enna, kadayadu, power, kadayadu, adhikaram, kadayadu
Because after he takes the baptism, you had no control about him or her
Adu, cholukadu, am, adu, teriyandhu, vana, aadi, kirkana
And that spirit is saying, knowing only, "I am shaking like this"
Al, dam, idhukai, time
That's the time
Ah, aadu, paranga, enna, aadu, aadu
And you should see how it was shaking like that
Aadu, vega, mulinavane, right, poetiya, poeti, right, alipar, yanasana
After its speed has gone, he said, "You've gone", and now he baptized
Ippan, namma, badiyalak, abdi, gudukadu, vandhal, angay, vandhu, trippi, aadu, sabaila
Because half the people are not giving baptism like this, they are again rolling about in this church
Ippav, varamaari, aadu
Now, they are dancing differently
Aadu, mudiyavirichu, vada, aadu, kudumathu, vada, aadu
Now, not putting out their head, they are not dancing, but
Sabaila, kolappam, bani, aadu
Causing confusion in the church and dancing
Vetta, vada, aadu
And shaking the families
Ah, ivan, kerkaran, yanasana, edhutthangale, sabai, poyitthangale, ayu, adu, pogavillai
Now, they ask, they have taken baptism, they've gone to the church, that spirit is not gone
Ah, enika, anegar, kula, idu, kadandu, poradu
Today, this spirit is thriving, many of them
Unnee, oru, velicham
Your righteousness is a light
Sariyana, vishyam, bachin, indha avi, odi, peta
If you receive right baptism, the spirit will flee
Oru avi, dam, unkukumadu, ivan, yadavi, irukamadu
Only one spirit can decide in you, not seven
Parishuthavi, poyita, parishuthavi, vandaradu
When the unclean spirit goes, the holy spirit will come
Ah, daivu, saidu, nam, indha naankalile, namdiddyavnee, velicham, endhada, marandu, vada, kodadu
You should not please forget that your righteousness is a light
Over step, oop, step, pa, ni, vada, vada, velichathle, nee, adiyathu, vaitukundae, varukarana
Every step you go ahead, you are going ahead in the light
Aravata, vedam cholukaradu, avanndyavvelichathil, velicham, kaankarav
That is why the word of God says, "We see light in the light"
Avanndyavvelichathle, innan, namavelichathai, kaankarav
We see light in thy light
Katthodiya parishutha namathukumai muntavada
Glory be to the Holy Name of the Lord
Adutthi, avanudiyavmukhatin, velicham
Nextly, light on his face
89 avasanathay, parkumbadudu
And read 89 Psalm
Angay, enna cholappadukaradu
What is said there?
81 avasanathale, nam, parkumbadudu
Psalm 81
81, avasanathay, omudiyav, vas, unid, mukhatin, velicham, endhada, oru, avasanam, endhada
Psalm 89
89, 15 Angay, enna cholukaradu
What is said there?
Gambira, sata, kertkare, janangal, bhakki, mulavarkai
Blessed are the people that know the joys of the sun
Avan, unggal, mukhatin, velichathil, nadapavarkai
They shall walk on the light of their countenance
Andavudiyavmukhatin, andha, velicham, irukaradu
In the light, on the countenance of God and light
Andha, andavudiyavmukhatin, velichathle, naman, nadakkala
We should walk in the light of his faith
Abidin, enna, thao
What does this mean?
Andavukumunbaga, nee, irundhu, unndiyavalkai, amakkanu
You should establish your life before the Lord
Aravata, 39, vaidle, abraham, kattar, pesumadu, enakkumunbaga, nadandukundu, nee, endiyare, unmay, utthamanai, are
That is why when Abraham was 99 years
That is why when Abraham was ninety-nine years old, he said, "You walk before me and be the upright." If we be before the Lord, then we can cross through in that light itself. The light of his countenance. The light of his countenance is shining in a heart. That is why he said, "Lord, send thy light." When the light of the Lord comes, we will go through this path. Therefore, how many of you this morning is going to ask God to send delight to you? When we read in Psalm one hundred and ninety. Thy word is a light. Then we have the word of God in our hands, how much of light. Every word is a light. That word itself is a light. The command is the lamp and the word is the light. Proverbs six twenty-three, we can read this. The word of God is a light to us. If man gets a word, then he will keep that word all the lives of life. I came newly to the religion. I did not know the word of God more. I do not know how many chapters the word of God. But I came into God. And the Lord began to speak to me. But I did not know any verse. That was a time. And I was sitting in a new year. I had a small diary. And the Lord kept speaking continuously. I could understand that he is speaking something, I do not know where the location is. It seems that he speaks not without any continuance, but as far as I knew, I was keeping on writing. After that, my sister had studied Sunday school, I came and asked. Did the Lord speak to you? Firstly, I asked, "Do you know that there is a word like this?" She did not know. I too did not know. Only after Sundays, I found it out. And that was my calling and saying so I came to ministry. The words which the Lord spoke in that time when I was ignorant, when I came newly, that was my calling. It was a word which had no relevance at all. I did not know the head or tail of that word. It was without any relevance. I did not know if it was in eighty-one or eighty-two or eighty-three. Suddenly, the Lord spoke to me that day. One word. And many verses came and I was writing to self. Of it was one word. That was the word. I did not know who is Zarephat and who is the son. I had not read the word of God, I do not know where the book of Kings was. And somebody has given me a Bible. I came newly inside. And when the Lord began to speak, somebody said, "You write and keep." It will be useful for you in the last two days. And I came and said. All of them were reading, they were crying, they were trying to read, they were trying to read, they were trying to read. All of them was feeling in the spirit when I came for the new year, I could not get to feel in the spirit, but the Lord was speaking to me that it's son of Zarephat, I did not know where the location is. Lord repeat the whole name of the Lord. The Lord called me for ministry. And some of them said that I had seen a vision like this, I saw a sand grazing the sheep. Except to be called like Aaron, no person is being ordained for this ministry. And they asked me as to what my calling was. I said, "He called me as the son of Zarephat," and I came. And that was alright. Why I say this? It was that word which was leading me until this day. When all of them are asked to reckon by their calling, I will get this right. From the day he gets called me, this sound is sounding my ears. Even yesterday, I was saying that as the Lord does call me, even so, you should make me to live a life and do the ministry. It was just one word. That word is a light. That word is a light. Holding on to that one word, we can go on until eternity. And where the psalmist says like this. There are many verses in the word of God. But I know a word which made me to believe. There are many verses in the word of God, but there is one word which made me to believe. Psalm one hundred and nineteen verse forty-nine. And the word which you have made me to believe, you remember that word. There are many verses in the word of God, many promises too, but there is a word which is spoken to you and that is your life. Like this, each of them will have a personal experience. If you have not received, you ask and practice it. That is why ask the people who are going through problems and those who are sick, you ask a word from the Lord. That one word will leave you all the days if you live. Because there's a great power in it. Thy word is a light and the word of God is a light. By one word, has many of them saved. By one word, how many families have been redeemed? One word has made a man as a millionaire. One word is making one person as giant, as a sumative cause. Those who were fishing, the Lord said, "Come behind me, I will make you fish as of men," that one word came back, then to follow him. That is why he says, "Lord, you send thy word, thy light." Send out thy word. Send their righteousness. Send the pillar of fire, Lord. Let me walk in the light of their countenance. If the father is having a light and carrying his child, then the child is also crossing into the darkness with that light. When that king is saying about Daniel, that there is light in him. Because that light came into him. Daniel chapter five verse fourteen. I have heard that the spirit of God is in thee and that light and understanding and excellent business found in thee. See what a clear word he utters. I heard that there is light in you. What do you do with thy light? You are able to show the interpretation of dark thing. Do we have the spirit of light? If we have the spirit of light. Then we will become precious in this path. What did the light do? It lifted up Daniel to the third person and that's a plea. The clear reasons for the Lord to lift him up is cited here. When the word of God says in another interpretation. In Daniel five eleven. In him is the spirit of the Holy God. In him is the light and understanding and excellent wisdom. What a clear word is said about him. In him is light. It was that light which led him and lifted him up to the third position in the land of Pathe. It is the person who is a slave, who was brought into the kingship was this light. It is a young lad who is preserved in his consecration as a light. A young person to preserve himself that he might be holy in this life was this light. He lived as a god who was living without flesh. That is why David asked God, "Send me the light." In this life of darkness, in the life of problems, in this faith life, let that lead me. In from the pillar of fire, you lead me. From the candlestick which is the church, the servants of God, let them lead me. Let this baptism and anointing lead me. Let me walk in the light of the countenance. Yes, Isaiah. Chapter fifty-one. Verse four. I have established my judgment to be a light to the people. The law is established as a light. There is a law to the church. In the old testament, it was the law. But in the new testament, the doctrine. The law in the old testament and doctrine in the new testament. That is the law to the church. That is the law, doctrine is the law. And law is the light and the law should lead you. Not to say however you want, you can live, but you should live like this. In reading Romans six seventeen. But that you have obeyed to the doctrine which is written to you, thanks be to God. In the old testament is the law, new testament is the doctrine. Therefore, we have to obey to these laws. It's not a law according to for our own church alone, but under the aspect of the word of God, that is a doctrine. There is no law or doctrine which is written only for the Pentecostal church in the word of God. But there is an apostolic doctrine. That is clearly spoken in the word of God. We should stand in that doctrine. That is the law. Why if one is not fighting according to the law, he cannot be crowned. You see in the sports. If you place your legs in the track, it's over. If you should place your feet before this commanded, it's gone. You might have talents, wisdom and power and the power to overcome, but if you cross the track, it's gone. For that you cannot blame anyone. Like this. That is apostolic doctrine which is given to you to walk in this Pentecostal like this and that is the light. Now David asked God, "Send your light." That light, let it lead me. Next, the word which he says. Lord, you send out that truth. What does this mean? Firstly, because there was darkness, he asked for light. Next, he is asking for truth. What is truth? Is it a promise? That is not that promise. This shows the depth of doctrine. This shows the doctrine of the word of God. Because he has been hearing many voices. He was hearing the voices of men. When Eroni's doctrines he has heard. He has heard the voice of Satan. Even today, many of them are hearing the voice of Satan. I hear some voice in my ear. There is something appearing in my mind. Something is appearing in my heart. He is diverting the message, what we preach. I will tell you the first device of the devil. I will tell you the first cause which the Satan has done. Preaching another thing contrary to the word of God. You shall die on the day when you shall eat of this fruit. This is hard. He has created man beautifully in his likeness and image and first condition which he has laid this, that a sharp sword which will break into two. And that was a different preaching to him. Next, he heard a message. Is there anything which the Lord has spoken to you? A new pastor came in Genesis chapter three. And in the second chapter, Jesus, God was a preacher. And then third verse came another preacher. Is there anything which the Lord has commanded you? Immediately he spoke. Yes, he shall eat of all the fruit of the garden, but that he might not die, you should not eat of this fruit, he said. In chapter three verse four, he said, he is preaching that he shall not die. They did not know what is divinity or what is flesh. And he said, "You eat of this fruit for you shall not die." And nextly, you will become as gods and come down from heaven. Which preaching is good? Which preaching is nice? When my mother, when I was ministering in Chennai. I went to her house one day. She was in great sorrow. I asked why. Every week you preach very beautifully, but why did you speak so toughly this week? Every week I came with blessing, but this week became tears for me. Then I thought as to what message it was this week. Nehemia said that if one who is getting ashary for one percentage, for hundred percentage, then he will be cut off like this, I preached. If you get for ashary, then you will be destroyed, that is what I preached, and because she was getting that ashary, it was a problem with her. And should I say that he will be blessed if you get for interest and you keep on getting that ashary, can I write a word like this? Any of them giving interest like this? And I do not know why this message is coming to this interest. You should not do like this. You would say that I am getting only for one price, the other places they are getting for five price and two price and so on, but for one price, he will destroy you, he says. You just hark unto this truth like carefully. If you say that you've got only for less or more than it's gone. In Nehemia, chapter five verse thirteen, you can see this. I said that you can take from her, give to her, that which you have got out for one out of the hundreds. And in verse thirteen, he says that anyone who is not fulfilling this promise, he shall be shaken out and shall be emptied, and everyone said amen. Odena namalvaran, puriyirpati.
Immediately, our New Testament comes.
Yes, oru thanthi chonnar, ennudhey panaththi, ni va, kasukkara karantthi koduthirundhal, nan vendu vattiode vangiikkulven chonnar, appai yesuve vatti vanganalan chonnar.
If, and Jesus said in a parable, that if you should go and give it to the money exchanges, then I will get it in ashari, then Jesus himself asked to give ashari.
Ni om panaththasavepani vekal, adukka government koduthanam, bank kodutha vangiikav, adavittutte, neepai financele potu, motamathu idu peruvaa.
You can save your money if the bank interest is given to you, you can get this, but totally don't give it into the finance.
Adavittutte.
Leaving that.
Viswasiyilke vatti koduthirti, ni amma thitthala yadukkada.
And giving the interest to the believers, you should not cheat around.
Avangal cholraga, vattiin chonnaranga, om baya thoda thirimby kodukkara, illana stotharamundhu poirav, avinikara.
And they say, when only if he says it's for interest, then he is with fear getting that money or he's saying please Lord, going.
Bibil ennath cholradhathirima, kayumaru karamal kadangudu.
The word of God says, you lent that you might not see in exchange.
Avinin ennatham.
What does it mean?
Kayumaru karamal kadangudu ennatham.
Not expecting.
Thirumbava vandri ennammal kadangudu.
You give, you lent that you will not expect in return.
Idavittututtu, ni yondu asalenni, chandiyapodukkada, enakkipona varan kodukkaranjuni, indhavaran kodukkaranjuni, monvaran avan thoratharamchina, avan service kittaevaramata, oru yevidu.
Leaving this, you should not come and fight saying that you promised to give me last week and this week, and if you continuously fight like this for three, three weeks, you will flee.
Viswasiyil vattikey kodukkakudada.
Believers should not give for interest.
Viswasiyilke kodukkakudada.
You should not give to the believers.
Viswasiyil kodukkal vangal vakkakudada.
And to believers, you should not give, give and take.
Appudi onakkatharaalam manadharundhal kodukkalam, kettakudada.
If you have a broad mind, you can give but not ask back.
Oru vela avan thirumbak koduthal, vangiikkolala.
If he should give back in return, you can receive it.
Adavittutte, avan kathutha podichin erukkakudada.
Leaving that, you should not put his neck in a grave.
Ilannu, onda illanu solidu, irundhinna kodukamudiyadu, no opana solidu.
If you have, you say you give, otherwise you say you are not able to give in open way.
Ivangoray platelessavduvanga.
They will eat in one plate.
Oray vandila povanga.
They will go in one vahik.
Oray vittlapi padukkavanga.
They will go sleep in one house.
Appa pathingana, ivan anga kodupav, avan inga kodupav, karishal prashanannu vandhodane, appanana namutthavaru, ivangay edhukku oray platelessavthangarudhu thirium.
Those days, they will give and take, but when problem comes, it is then we can understand that they ate one plate.
Avinin seyavay kuda.
We should never do this.
Ekkaranamunutti viswasiyil, viswasiyil kodukkal vangal pannadinka.
In no occasion should believers give an exchange with believers.
Ningayavandhi edhavnaalu vaaththi kakkavariya, adukuda varaavudama unni thorti vudruva.
He will, you are coming here to get, take one word, he will chase you that you may not receive this.
Onakkathar kodutharana, nala panaththiyyum kodukkano, adhenathal onakkana la visalamana mananayum kodukkano, ni kodu, kattar avan, nala asirvadikittam, onniyinkathar asirvadipa.
If the Lord will give you, then he will give you the money and also your mind to give to them, you give and the Lord will bless you more.
Thirumbakadakumengar, edhivarpo, ni kadang kadang kodukkakudada.
To not lend with a mind that you will expect it back.
Kayumathukodukal, avang thirimby koduthavaniikav, illana adukka ni chandapodukkada.
You can give an exchange but if he is not giving back, don't go and fight.
Nan cholradhathu ungalukku sariyandhu, ningal aavi kuriyarul othukulivirkay.
And the spiritual people will acknowledge that it's right what I'm saying.
Pastor cholradhathabata, yaligal kodu visiyakudada, nirara, avinila, yen viyu, om mandelayathikunna, karakta athikunna.
It's not to say that pastor said like this and I should not help the poor, but you should exactly take this in your mind.
Ah, inna prasangathrinde aaviyanudhey viyu ennangarudhu, ni kanduvidin.
You should understand the view of the message.
Kodunga.
You give.
Ni kadang vanga thirupai, kadang kodupai.
You, you, you shall lend and not take.
Ah, ana, avangakoduthavangiikav.
But if they give you return, they take back.
Onakkilliya, ni kodukkada.
If you don't have that mind, don't give.
Avan patha ayaravakattam, ayaravakuduthu stotharam, jen solidu, pona potu, gandhikaanakla setukkada.
If he's asking for ten thousand, you can give a thousand and let him go and leave it long.
Vittru adha vittru.
And you leave it.
Ah, adukka, engayame, indha prashniyavarakkada.
There should no problem arising like this anywhere here.
Idhukkarishilavandhi pastatta vandhi nikkukkada, ni raabo jinadukkada, thadayaarukkada, sevasamuthukvaradhuka thadayaakam, amindhuvadakudada.
Finally, it should not be a problem coming to the pastor and for you taking a hindrance for you to take the communion or you coming to the presence of God.
Namudhananthal remba gavunamasu irukkavindi oru kala.
This is the time when we should be very careful these days.
Ningayavant cholukarana, ummadiyath satthiyaththi enakkani piyadu.
Here he says, Lord, send thy truth.
Satthiyam enbadu remba mukkiyamana.
Truth is most important.
Ah, avanay kakkara, andavare, ummadiyath satthiyaththi enakkannup.
He's saying, Lord, you send your truth.
Vedhan cholukaradu vasaname satthiyam.
What the God says, that the word is true.
Indha satthiyaththi ennathupcholukkara.
Why is he asking to send this truth?
Undru avanadaya vaathay.
One thing is his path.
Adukvelichantav.
He needs light to this.
Rendavudhu valkiki indha satthiyantav.
Secondly, for his life, he needs this truth.
Lifeamathirukkuru indha satthiyana.
It is the truth which is in his life.
Prasangam kakkumbele, oru prasangam ondraminaran kakkiringala, oru manarank kakkiringa, idhukullayee, onakkullu oru maathasambavichirukkano, adham prasangam.
You're hearing the message for one and one and half hours, within this, there should be a change in you, that is message.
Indha vaaththi kakkumbele, onakkullay, aaviyay, athmaavay, sarirathle, undhey businessle, engangangala, karakpanudamo, ni karakpaniite varanam.
When you hear this message itself, you should correct yourself wherever it is needed in your body, soul and spirit and any business too.
Na oru manaravadikira.
I am, I am sewing for one hour.
Illadu ondraminaran vadikira.
One and a half hours in sewing.
Indha ondraminaran vedela, adu enga poorudin, ni pathitthi erukkano.
In the sewing of one and a half hours, you should see as to where it's going and falling.
Oh, life ondhi kallummarundhinna, paramarundhinna, adhangaladha vulu.
If your life is stony like a rock, it will fall there.
But kakkumbele, shichpe, kakkumbele, interestarukka, ana butu balanarkada, appidi veyil varumbadu, idenjinjaro, kanji onnilam, tejju boy.
You will interestingly hear this but it will be of no use because when the sun is waxing hot, it will become black.
Illavatthu ondu vali, valibola irundhinjana.
Or if there is, your heart is like the wind.
Ah, appudi idhinjana, indhaveda vulu.
This seed will fall.
Ni kakkumbele, nala arukkuma, adukullay, mindukolambyro, manasu maridro, indha paravaygal vandhi, ennangal, adu eduthukondu poivadro, onakkay, shangalan kattai, innikenna prasangam, ama, ennath prasangam, ennath prasangam, ennath poirichad, kaka, parave eduthirtu poirich.
You will see that the message is good but because now ways say that the, the, the birds are taking away and you will not realize as to what the message is by.
Anatheneerathal, om hatthu ondu mullum, nirjinjulum, oray vedanayum, sanjalamu, kolaputhalani, ukandhinda prasangathakakattu, kakkumbele, nala arukkaya, nala arukkuma, patte indha mullu, valara vada, indha satthiyathinbidi, oni enikavada.
But if your heart is as the thorns and if you have, if you are being disturbed by all these thorns, then this word will not be able to operate in you.
Ana, indha satthiyathini karakta kettina.
But you should exactly hear this word.
Kakkumbele, changing.
There will be change when you hear this.
Yoan, padinayindu, munevudhu ningal parkumbele.
In John fifteen, verse three.
Ningal kettu ubadesathithinal,ippolade, ningal sutthama karirikay.
By the truth you have heard, you are now clean.
Andavattheli vasvasrar.
The Lord clearly speaks.
Alakana vaaththiyad.
That's a beautiful word.
Na ungalukchunna ubadesathithinalay, ningal,ippolade, sutthama irukkire.
Are now clean through the word which I have spoken to.
Kakkumbele, oru changing nanandukittayarkanu.
As you hear, there will be a change in you.
Adukni ennathen thirima, manasu oru manupadithi, stotharamanidite, kettukittayarkanu.
For that, you should keep your mind on one and praise God and hear this.
Abhishekathodukkattukittayarkanu.
In anointing, you should hear.
Andhupvaththavarambele, indha vaaththiye, indha satthiyathrinde thanminthirima, kakkumbele, oni sutthamaakko, om paavaththi nirvathisenchukittay.
The tendency of this truth is, it will make you clean and make your, and cleanness of your sins.
Ah, onudhey paavaththi nirvathisayum.
It will recompense your sins.
Neethimuligal.
Proverbs.
Padinaru, araparkumbele.
Chapter sixteen, verse six.
Kirubayum, satthiyum, satthiyum, paavaththi nirvathipannam.
And the grace and truth which will make you to recompense of your sins.
Namudhey jeeviyathle, modalavudhu indha satthiyathilulle thanminanam, kirubayinalam, satthiyathinalam, paavam, nirvathiahum.
And by the mercy and truth and the sin will be purged out of us.
Oru naalvaran, indha charchikini, devanade vaaththi kakkumbele, naalvidamana gunangal, onakkullarundha, alikkeputtukkana.
When you hear the four kinds of messages for four weeks, then four characters should be destroyed from you.
Overnaalani devanade vaaththi kakkak, onakkullay, alikkepadavendi, devanukupriemalada kariyangalallam, alindu, undhey paavon nirvathayakite varan.
As you hear the word of God, that which things which has not been pleasing to God should be destroyed and the iniquity should be purged.
Adukka thanavankakara, satthiyaththi annuppo.
That is why he asked to send the truth.
Avandevalkila palatholvigal.
There are many failures in his life.
Palapavangal.
Many sins.
Adunnimitham, palaniyay thirupigal.
And because of that many judgments.
Ivanchenjathappunala, om pilla adiputichal, kevalama poisethupochi.
And for the wrong that he has done, his child died and will die.
Ivanchenjathappunala, yeludhunayare vairsathanga.
And.
Ivansaidhathavari nali, yeludhunayare vairsathanga.
And because of this sin that he has done, seventy thousand people died.
Pramanathinbidi sailbadha padchathle, ah, ayrakkanakana janangal, avanaday naatla settham.
When he is not operating according to the law, thousands of people died in his land.
Bayangaramana punchangal undanad.
There were many famines which occurred.
Adhaladha avant cholra, kattavai satthiyaththi annupung, indha paavaththallam, konya nirvathipanivadunga.
That is why he asked God to send the truth and purge out his sins.
Yoan, ettu, mupathi irandin badi parkumbele.
In John eight, thirty two.
Satthiyam oru manidhanay viddalayakukkara.
Truth is delivering a man.
Oru maamsathla kattappatta valkay, aaviyala kattappatta valkay, palavidamalile, poratthangalile, sikikonda valkay, idu marunna, indha satthiyathinala thana mudiyam.
The life which is entangled in sins and the life which is entangled in some many problems, if it should be daily, but it is only possible with truth.
Padinalu orisam, aylkaidiyaraka.
And for fourteen years, he was.
Oru manisham, padinalu orisam, aylkaidiyaraka, vachikka.
He, he was a prisoner for fourteen years.
Ah, adu aylkaidi.
He was a prisoner for all his days.
Avanukke life, adu life undhan choluvanga ellar.
It was a life prisoner.
Aylkaidi, na padinalu orisam, avan irukkano, jaila.
If it is a life prisoner, he should be there in the jail for fourteen years.
Padinalu orisam, kalchavaliyavarambu, oru order varo.
And after fourteen years, when he comes, he will an order.
Vadenalayin oru vaaththi.
And there will be a word in it.
Andhavaththi pathavoni, avanay jaila irundhi velliyanupav.
And when he is saying that word, they will send him out of that jail.
Courtlerundha, order vandukkav.
And there will be an order from court.
Ah, avaliyavav.
He is coming out.
Adu bole, indha satthiyam, onakkavandhi, undhey, chareerupalallam, otatchit, thakathu, neviliyavanduvar.
That like this, the truth should remove all your prison natures and should bring you out.
Adhaladha bibil cholradhathu, satthiyaththi arivirikal, satthiyam ungalay, viddalayak.
They, for the word of God says, he shall know the truth and the truth shall make you free.
Orusaladukkunna, indha satthiyam, puriyamadha.
Some of them don't understand this truth.
Illadu, eethukulamudiyala.
Or they cannot accept it.
Adu appidinga, idhu appidinga, kollapurangala, adukolambarudhel, karnan abhisheenilla, nalalalakolapam.
They are confused as to how this shall be and that can be because without anointing, they are not able to understand.
Yoan, padinaru, panirandala, idhukurithi, yesu pesumbele.
When Jesus speaks about this in John sixteen, twelve.
Innum anegakariyangalay, naan ungalukku chollevinidai, irukkara.
And there are many things which I should say to you now.
Ananal,ippoladu ningal, ivigalay, thangamatiyak.
But you cannot endure this now.
And Jesus says that there are many things that I should speak you, my apostles, through the Holy Spirit.
அனேக காரியங்கள் நான் உங்களுக்கு சொல்லவிடிதாயிருக்கிறது, ஆனால் உங்களால் தாங்குமிடியாது. காரணம் உங்களுக்கு பரிசுத்தாவி இல்ல.
There are many things which I should bear record of them now, but you don't have the Holy Spirit, therefore you will not bear.
ஆனால் ஸத்தியாவியாகிய வரும்பொழுது, சகல ஸத்தியத்துக்குள்ள வள்ளின்றது. அது என்ன? சகல ஸத்தியம்?
But when the spirit of truth is coming into you, he will guide you into all the truth. What's that truth?
அது என்ன? சகல ஸத்தியம்.
What is all truth?
அப்படின்னா அதுக்கு என்ன அற்றோ?
What does that meaning?
யானசான ஒரு ஸத்தியம்.
Back to the truth.
பரிசுத்தாவி ஒரு ஸத்தியம்.
Holy Spirit is the truth.
வேறு பட்டின் ஜீவியை ஒரு ஸத்தியம்.
And life of separation is the truth.
விஷ்வாசத்தை காத்துக்கொள்வரும் ஒரு ஸத்தியம்.
And keeping the faith is the truth.
பிரதிஷ்டியை காத்துக்கொள்வரும் ஒரு ஸத்தியம்.
Keeping the consecration is the truth.
பரிசுத்த ஜீவிதை காத்துக்கொள்வரும் ஒரு ஸத்தியம்.
Keeping the life of holiness is the truth.
எப்படின்னு நீங்க வாராவாரா வாங்கு, உங்களுக்கு புதுபுது ஸத்தியம் குடுத்திடையும்.
Like this, you come every week and new truths will be given to you.
கத்தரியை வேறத்துல நம்ம வந்து பிரசங்க எல்லாத்தை மனியும் முடிச்சின்னு சொலவே மிடியாது.
In the word of God, we cannot say that you have preached everything.
ஒரே வர்த்திலே ஒருவரும் பிரசங்கம் மண்டபரிசுத்தம் வாங்கலாம் என்று செராங்க. இருக்காங்க.
There are many saints who are preached only one by one by the same church together.
ஒரே வசனம், ஆனால் வாராவாரோ செஞ்சாயிடையே வரும்.
One verse and it will keep changing every week.
ஆனால் ஸத்தியம் உங்களுக்குள்ள இருக்க வேண்டும்.
Therefore, truth shall be in you.
யோவான் 17:14 பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
In John 17:17.
சத்தியம் உன்னை பரிசுத்தமாக்கு.
And the truth shall sanctify you.
அந்த சத்தியத்தின்னுடைய அதினால தான் அவங்க கேக்கறான். பாவத்தை நிவர்த்தியாக்குங்க. பாவத்திலும் விடுதலாதாங்க. எனை பரிசுத்தமாய் மாற்றுங்க. அதுகாக உம்மடைய சத்தியதை அனுப்புங்க.
That is why he says, "You deliver me, purge me out of my sins, and you make me holy and sanctify me for that you said your truth."
எதுக்காக அவங்க சத்தியத்தை கேட்டான்னு பாத்தீங்களா?
You say as to why you have the truth?
அவங்க ஏன் சத்தியத்தை கேட்டா?
Why did he ask for truth?
நீ எம் பைபில் வாங்கியுச்சிருக்கிறேன்.
Why have you got the Bible?
அந்த சத்தியத்தை படி.
You read that truth.
அது படிக்கும்பொழுது.
When you learn it.
ஆலங்களை ஆராய்ந்து பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
When you search the depth.
அதுனடைய உபதேச விளக்கங்களை நீ கேட்கும்பொழுது.
When you get the explanations of the doctrine.
முதலாவது இந்த சத்தியத்தினால உன்னை பாவ நிவர்த்தியாக.
Firstly, by this truth will your sins be purged.
இரண்டாவது இந்த சத்தியத்தினால உனக்கு விடுதலைங்கின் ஜீவியங்க கிடைக்கும்.
Secondly, by this truth you will have a life of deliverance.
மூன்றாவது இந்த சத்தியத்தினால நீ பரிசுத்தமாக்கப்படுவா.
Thirdly, you will be sanctified by this truth.
இது உன்னை எட்டு விளக்கவே கூடாது.
And this should not depart from you.
எப்பொழுதுமே இந்த சத்தியம் உங்க கையிலே இருக்கணும்.
Truth shall be always in your hands.
இந்த சத்தியம் வந்து ஒரு மனிதனுக்கு அரைக்கச்சை போன்றது.
This truth is like a lion.
அந்த சத்தியத்தில் சந்தோஷமா இருக்கணும்.
And he should be happy in that lion.
இந்த சத்தியத்தை நீ நேசிக்கே வேண்டும்.
You should love this truth.
இரண்டு தேச்சில் இருக்கு, இரண்டு பத்தில் சொல்லிருக்கு. "சத்தியத்தின் மேல் உள்ள அன்பு."
Second Thessalonians 2:10, it is said that love about the truth.
இந்த சத்தியத்தை கேட்கும்பொழுது உனக்கு வெறுப்போற கூடாது. இந்த சத்தியம் கேட்க கேட்க உனக்கு இண்ட்ரஸ் வந்துடையுறுகணும்.
When you hear this truth, they should not be hated, but you should be interested more in it.
அன்னாவரே சொல்லுகிறான், "ஆண்டவரே, உம்மடைய வெளிச்சத்தையும் சத்தியத்தையும் அனிப்பி அருளும்."
That is why he said, "Lord, you send thy light and thy truth."
ஐசாயா 26:14 பார்க்கும்பொழுது. "சத்தியத்தைக் கைக்கொண்டுவருகிற நீதியுள்ள ஜாதி உள்ளே பிரவேசிக்க வாசல்கள் திறக்கப்படும்."
According to Isaiah 26:2, open the gates of the righteous nation which keepeth the truth manly.
இவங்க சொல்றா, "இந்த இரண்டு அனுப்போ அதியனை நடத்தட்டுங்க." என்கிறான்.
He said, "Send both these two, and it shall lead me."
"உம்மடைய வெளிச்சத்தையும் உம்மடைய சத்தியத்தையும் அனிப்பி அருளும்."
You send out the light and thy truth.
"அவைகள் எனை நடத்தட்டும்."
Let them lead me.
அது அனுப்புங்க, "அவங்க அந்த இரண்டுமே எனை நடத்தட்டுங்க" சொல்றா.
You send them both, and let them lead me.
இந்த வெளிச்சமோ இந்த சத்தியமோ உன்னை நடத்திடையுறுகணும்.
This light and truth will lead you.
அன்னிய வல்லமிகள் உன்னை நடத்தக்கூடாது.
Not strange powers.
மனிஷம் உன்னை நடத்தக்கூடாது.
No man should lead you.
ஏதோ ஒரு சபைப்போதகன் உன்னை நடத்தக்கூடாது.
No preacher of a church should lead you.
உன்னை மாமியாரும் உன்னை நடத்தக்கூடாது.
Your mother-in-law should not lead you.
உன்னை தாய் உன்னை நடத்துறதுல உலகத்திலுள்ள சின்னசின்ன காரியங்கள்.
And your mother leading you for small matters.
அன்னிதோ வாள்கீலை உன்னை நடத்துறதுக்கு வெளிச்சம் சத்தியம்.
But in your spiritual life, it is light and truth which is leading you.
அதுதான் நமக்கு தாயும் தாபுப்புனு போன்றது.
That is our mother and father.
அதுதான் உம்மடைய இரண்டு கண்கள் போன்றது.
Those are two eyes, two hours.
அதனால தான் அவங்க சொல்றா, "எங்க அப்பா என்னை நடத்தட்டுட்டான் ஆண்டவரே" என்று சொல்லலே. அவங்க சொல்றா, "உம்மடைய வெளிச்சத்தை அனுப்பும், உம்மடைய சத்தியத்தை அனுப்பும். அவைகள் எனை நடத்தட்டும்."
That is why he never asked his father to lead him, but sent other light and their truth, let them lead him.
இந்த வெளிச்சமோ, இந்த சத்தியமோ கரெக்ட்டா நடத்தும்.
This light and this truth, it will exactly lead you.
யாக்கோபியின் பாத்திர்ண்டை வாள்கீலை சொல்றா, "நீரினக்கு பாராட்டின சத்தியதை நான் எவளவும் தகுதியுள்ளவன் அல்லே."
She says that I am no more, no worthy a talker, see the truth which you have seen me.
இந்த வெளிச்சத்துக்கு இந்த சத்தியத்துக்கும் நடத்தக்கூடிய பவர் இருக்கு.
This light and this truth have power to lead.
கத்தர் உங்களை நடத்துகிறாரா?
Is the Lord leading you?
எலியேசர் சொல்றான், "கத்தர் என்னை நேர்வெளியா நடத்துனா?"
Eliezer said that the Lord led me in the straight path.
இஸ்ரேவேல் ஜனங்கள் சருத்தரத்தை நீங்க பாத்தீங்கன்னா?
When you see the history of the Israelite.
ரெம்ப சார்ட் ரூட் தான் கானானுகு போறது.
That's a very short route to go to Canaan.
ஆனால் அவங்க நடந்தது எத்தனவுற்றம்?
But how many years did they walk?
நாப்பது வரடா.
For forty years.
காரணம் அவங்கள் நேர்வெளியில் நடத்தப்படவில்லை.
Because they were not led in a straight path.
ஆனால் நீ எலியேசரா இருந்தால்.
But if you are Eliezer.
ஆப்ரகாமோடு நீ எனைந்து நிக்கிறவனா இருந்தால்.
If you were united with Abraham.
கத்தரின்னு பாதில் உன்னை நேர்வெளியா நடத்துவா.
The Lord will lead you in this path, in a straight path.
விஷ்வாசத்தில் நீ நின்று.
You standing in faith.
நீ ஒரு பரிசுத்தாவின் அபிஷேகமான் நடத்தபடுகிற மனிஷனா இருந்தால்.
If you be a man who is led by the Holy Spirit.
ஆதியாகும் 24:48 பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
Genesis 24:48.
எலியேசர் சொல்றா, "கத்தர் என்னை நேர்வெளியாய் நடத்தினா?"
Eliezer says that the Lord led me in the straight path.
நான் அலையல.
I did not roam about.
சுத்தி சுத்தி தேடல.
I did not go searching.
அவங்க அட்ரஸ் தெரியாது.
He did not know the address.
யாரு நு தெரியாது.
He did not know the who is.
ஆனால் கத்தர் அவனை நேர்வெளியா நடத்தினார்.
But the Lord led him in a straight path.
கரெக்ட்டா நடத்தினாரா?
He led him exactly.
எத்தனவரு அது விஷ்வாசிக்கிங்க?
How many of you believe this?
எலியேசரே, "கத்தர் அவங்க சொல்றா, "கத்தர் என்னை நேர்வெளியாய் நடத்தினா?"
Eliezer said that the Lord led me in the straight path.
இந்த மார்க்கத்தில வந்துட்டு நீங்க அப்படியே அலஞ்சிக்கிட்டே இருக்கவேண்டா?
And you should not be roaming about in this religion.
நீங்க கானானுகு பயனபடுறதுக்கு இன்னு எத்தனியும் ஒரு சம் பயனபடவேண்டி அவசியமே கிடையாது.
There's no need for you to journey for many years to Canaan.
ஒரு தாய் இன்னொரு நாட்டில இருக்கிறது, தன்னடைய பிள்ளையைப் பார்க்கப் படப்பட்டாங்க.
A one mother went to meet another girl in a foreign country.
அவங்க கப்பல்ல பயனத்துக்கு வந்திட்டாங்க.
She was journeying in a ship.
அப்போ திடின் வந்து அந்த கப்பலுடைய கேப்டன் வந்து இவங்கட்டைப் பேசினா.
Suddenly, the captain of the ship entrance spoke to her.
எதே சியா பேசினா?
And unfortunately, he spoke to her.
யார பார்க்கப் போறீங்க?
Whom are you going to see?
அங்க அவங்க எங்க இருக்காங்க?
Where are they?
இப்படில கேட்டான்.
Like this, he was enquiring.
அப்பா அந்த அம்மா சொல்லுச்சே.
And that mother said.
"அந்த நாட்டில இருக்காங்கன்னு தெரியும், ஆனால் அவங்க எங்க இருக்காங்கன்னு நக்குத் தெரியாது."
I know they are in that country, but I do not know exactly where they are.
அந்த இடத்தோட பேர் மட்டும் நக்குத் தெரியுனா.
But I know only the place.
அவங்க அந்த நாடு அந்த கேப்டனுக்கு தெரிஞ்சு நான் அவங்க சொன்னா, "யூயூ, இந்த கப்பல் போறவதற்குள்ளும் இரங்கி எத்தனியும் ஒரு நூற்றுகலம்மாகான கிலோமீட்டர் போனா தான் யார் இருப்பா?" "அந்த இடத்திற்கு போவோம், அங்க போய் எந்த டிரஸ்லே உங்களுக்கு தெரியாம எப்படி தேடுவீங்கன்னு கேட்டா?"
But that captain, on hearing the name of that place, said, "That is a hundred kilometers of where the ship is boarding. From there you should go and we will find him."
இந்த சம்பவத்தை எதா புக்குல படிச்சிருப்பீங்கன்னு நினைக்கிறேன். நானும் படிச்ச.
I think you would have read of this incident in a book.
இப்போ என்ன நடந்துச்சே?
What happened here was?
அவங்குக்கு பரிதாவுமா இருந்துச்சே.
He felt very pity for her.
இந்த அம்மா சொல்லுச்சே.
This mother said.
"இல்லேன், நான் ஜோம்மணிட்டு வந்துருக்கிறேன்."
No, I have come praying.
"கத்தர் என்னை எப்படியாவது அங்க கொண்டுபோயுவா?"
They'll obviously come out, take me there.
அப்போ சொன்னா, "யூயூ, இந்த கொஞ்சம் ஒரு தெளிவிலாதவர் ஆர்காங்களே, இரங்கி எப்படி இவங்க அத்தன நூற்றுகலம் துறுகுபோய், அங்க போய் எப்படி அந்த தேசத்தில இவங்க வீட்டை கண்டுபிடிக்கும் முடியும் பயனா, மகலா எப்படி கண்டுபிடிப்பா?"
He thought that this woman is so without any clearness, and how will she go so many kilometers afar and find out her child?
கரேசில் என்ன நடந்துச்சே?
Finally, what happened?
அவங்கு இவங்க மேலும் ஒரு பரிதாவ.
He was pity upon her.
"எப்படியாவது நம்ம இரங்கி, இவங்களை கொண்டுபோய், அந்த வண்டில் ஏற்றியுட்டுருவோ, அவங்க அங்க தேசத்தில் அந்த ஊர்ல நூற்றுகலம்கலோமெட்டர் தள்ளி இரங்கிட்டு எப்படியாவது போட்டோ?" "அந்த இடத்தில போய் அவங்களை கண்டுபிடிச்சாங்கன்னு லக்குதான் சொன்னேன்."
Some will take her and get her boat onto a bus where it is going on to that place, and some will she'll find her.
உன்னை இந்த அம்மா சொன்னாங்க, "பத்தியா, கத்தர் எனக்கு ஒரு ஆள் குடுத்துட்டாரே?"
And immediately the mother said, "See, immediately the Lord has given me a person."
சரி, இப்ப இரண்டுவரும் கப்பல் உட்டி இரங்கியாச்சே.
Now both of them got out of the ship.
அவங்க கப்பல் பயனத்தை அந்த வேலையில முடிச்சிட்டு, வேகமா பொறப்பட்டு இந்த தாயை கூப்பட்டு மெயின்டோடு கொஞ்சம்.
And finishing his work, he came bringing this mother into the main road.
மயங்கர் டிராபிக் டைமே.
And towards high traffic.
என்ன பண்றதுன்னு தெரிலே, ரோட் அக்ராஸ் பண்றதுக்காக இரண்டு ஒரு பெரிய கூட்டனிக்குதா இவங்களும் இனிக்கிறான்.
There was a great group to cross the road, and she was also standing with them.
சிக்கன் ஓகே ஓகே ஆயிட்ச்சு.
And the signal was clear.
ஜனங்கள் எல்லாம் முண்டி அடிச்சிட்டு இந்த இருந்து அந்த சைடுக்கு போய்டான்.
And the people were going ahead to the other side.
இந்த குழப்பத்தில, இந்த கேப்டன் யார உட்டிட்டான்? இந்த அம்மா உட்டிட்டான்.
In this confusion, that kept住了 that mother.
இவங்க இருந்து கும்பல்ல அப்படியே தனிட்ட போனங்க, எல்லார் நெல்லிக் கொண்டுவியா அந்த ரோட்ல உட்டான்.
And she along with the crowd went to the other side of the road.
இவங்க இவங்களை தேடிட்டு அதுக்குள் சிக்கன் கிளேராயிட்ச்சு.
Now again, the signal became cleared and it went on.
இவங்க அங்க கேப்டன் எங்க இருக்காரு, இவங்க இந்த சைடு வந்தாங்க.
And the captain was on the other side, and she came to the other side.
"யூயூ, இந்த அம்மா என்ன அவ்வேறு ஒன்னு இவங்க யோசிச்சிட்டு இருந்தா?"
And when he was thinking as to what will happen to this mother.
அங்கிருந்து அடித்த டிராபிக் ஸ்டாப் பண்ணி, ஆப்போசிட்ல வர்ற ஒரு கும்பல் ரெடியா நிக்குது.
There was another traffic which stopped on the other side, the opposite crowd was waiting.
இவங்க போனா நேர வந்து முட்டுனது மருமகன்.
And it was her mother, her son-in-law who came dashed against her.
அவை ஏதோ ஒரு வேலை விஷயமா, அவா அன்னைக்கு இங்க வந்து, அவா ஒரு கம்பெனியின் விஷயமா வந்துருக்கிறான். நேர போய் பார்த்து, "இவங்களைப் பார்த்து உன்னு இல்லாத இது எப்படி இங்க வந்தீங்கன்னு?" எல்லா ஆண்டவரே கொண்டு வந்தார்.
He came on some job to that place, and when he saw her, he was amazed, and he asked as to how he came, and it's the Lord who brought me.
கேப்டன் ஓடியு வந்தாரே.
The captain came running.
இப்போ இவங்கள் தெரிமாய் இவங்களுடைய போறீங்க. இவர்தான் என்ன மருமகன் நான் இவருடையே போயிருந்தான்.
And he asked as to whether you know her. He said, "This is my son-in-law. I will go with him."
கத்தர் வந்து உன்னை நடத்துனா கரெக்ட்டா நடத்துவாரு.
If the Lord will lead you, he will lead you correctly.
தேவன் நடத்துறதுக்கு அதாக வெளிச்சம் சத்தியம்.
What the Lord does leading is light and truth.
நம்ம கேக்கணும், "கத்தாவே நித்திய வழிலே என்ன நடத்துங்க?"
You should ask the Lord to lead us in the eternal way.
"என்ன தென் உண்டாக்க வழி என்ன நடத்தில் உண்டோ?" என்று பார்த்து நித்திய வழியில் என்னை நடத்தும்.
If you see if there are ways which are causing pain in my life and lead me in life eternal.
"ஆண்டவரே சொல்றார், "நான் நித்தமூ உன்னை நடத்துவேன்."
And the Lord says that I will lead you continually.
"உன்மேல் என்னுடைய கண்களை விட்டு உனக்கு ஆலோசனை சொல்லுவேன்."
I will keep my eyes upon you and give you counsel.
"நீ நடக்கவேண்டிய வழியை நான் உனக்கு காட்டுவேன்."
I will show you the path when you should walk.
வலது பொக்க விடது பொக்கம் சாயும்பொழுது வழி இதுவே எங்கற சத்தம் உனக்கு பின்னாலும் இருந்து கேட்கும்.
When you lean on to the left or to the right, there will be a voice from behind you saying this is the path.
சங்கிதகாரன் சும்மா கேக்கல, "அவங்க ரெம்ப தெளிவா கேட்டான். வெளிச்சத்தை அனுப்புங்க, சத்தியத்தை அனுப்புங்க. இது என்னை நடத்தட்டும்? நான் சிங்காசனத்தில இருந்தாலும் சரி, வனாந்தரத்தில ஓடிக்கொண்டிருந்தாலும் சரி, எந்த பாதில் நான் இருந்தாலும், இந்த இரண்டு எனை நடத்தட்டும்."
That is why this Amos asks God to send the light and truth, whether I be on the throne or in the wilderness, let this both lead me.
"ஆண்டவரே நடத்துதல் என்பது ஒரு நாள் இரண்டு நாள் அல்ல."
The leading of the Lord is not one or two days.
பிலிபியர் 1:5.
And Philippians 1:5.
"உங்களில் கிரியை நர்கிரியை தொடங்கினவர்."
Though he who has begun the good work in the name.
"அதை ஏசுக்ரிஸ்வின் நாள் வரியந்தம் முடிய நடத்தி வருவார் என்று நம்புகிறான்."
And we believe that until the day of Jesus Christ, he is able to keep you.
கதைசிவரைக்கும் கத்தர் உன்னை நடத்துவா.
And until the end, the Lord lead you.
"இந்த ஏசுக்ரிஸ்வின் ஆல் என்பது கிரிஸ்வின் வருகையே காண்பிக்கறான்."
The day of Jesus Christ shows the coming of the Lord.
"அவைகள் உன்னை ஆண்டவருன்னு தான் வெளிச்சமோ சத்தியமோ ஏசுக்ரிஸ்வின்டை வருகையை வரைக்கும் உன்னை நடத்தும்."
The light and truth will lead you until the day of Jesus Christ.
அதுதான் தேவனுடைய வல்லமினுடைய சத்தி.
That is the power of his word.
"உன்னை நடத்தக்கூடிய சத்தி இந்த இரண்டுக்கு இருக்கு."
There are these paths of these two to lead you.
அழகான ஒரு நடத்துதலை கத்தர் உனக்கு தருவா.
The Lord will give you a beautiful leading.
"உன்னை வேலைக்காரியங்கள்ல?"
In your workplaces.
"உன்னை தொளில் காரியங்கள்ல?"
In your business.
"உன்னை வீட்டு காரியங்களிலே?"
In your household matters.
"உன்னை புடும்பு காரியங்களிலே?"
In your family matters.
"உன்னை நெல்ல விஷயங்களிலே?"
In your land matters.
"உன்னை ஊழிய காரியங்களிலே?"
In your ministries.
"உன்னை பயனங்களிலே?"
In your journeys.
"எல்லா ஒத்திலும் கத்தர் நடத்துறதுக்கு அவர் கையில் கண்ட்ரோல் கொடுங்க."
You give the control for the Lord to lead you.
"அவர் உனக்கு மாலுமியாக இருக்குடும்."
Let him be a captain.
"அவர் உன்னை நடத்துகிறவராக இருக்கட்டும்."
Let him be the one who leads you.
"அவர் உன் வழிகாட்டியாக இருக்கட்டும்." Let him be the marker for you. And let him be the light on your path. And he will lead you until the end. This God will lead you until the day of Christ.
And the farmers says this God will lead us even until death.
What did Paul say? This God will lead you until the day of Christ. What should he do? Send out their light and truth, let them lead me and bring me into the holy hills, the tabernacles. Firstly, taking you to the holy hill. And secondly, taking you to the tabernacles. What is holy hill and what is the tabernacle? One is the church, nextly is, secondly is the heaven.
How can we understand this?
In Isaiah 56:7. The holy hill which is told here shows the house of prayer. When reading Isaiah 56:7. What is told there? I will bring them to my holy mountain and make them join the house of prayer. This light and truth will take you firstly to the house of prayer. That is the word of God. If you should believe in this path. You will become an inheritor in this church. We were once strangers and foreigners and beyond this inheritance. Nextly, not coming and going to church. You will become an inheritor of this house of prayer. We do not want strangers or well-wishers of this church. According to Isaiah 57:13. What is said there? He that put the trust on me shall possess the land and shall inherit my holy mountain. A child of God should be made an inheritor of this holy mountain and this light and truth brings into this person. We should not forget God. We should not forget the holy mountain of the church. Some of them as situations depart from God. As Isaiah 65:11. Some of them are forgetting the holy mountain and departing from God. As some of them are leaving the garden of the church, you should not leave. If you be in the holy mountain. If the light and truth will lead you and bring you to the holy mountain, make you an inheritor of this holy mountain. Jeremiah 31:23. It is in this holy mountain that the Lord will bless you. And you also will become a holy mountain after coming to this church. This light and truth is making you a holy person. The Lord bless the inhabitation of justice and mountain of holiness. The first work with this light and truth is doing is leading you and coming and joining into church. This is firstly bringing you into the holy hill. Nextly, where it takes you to. You bring me to the holy hill. And take me to the tabernacle. He will bring you firstly into the church and then take you to the it on the habitation. What is that habitation? What is that heaven? According to John 14:2. In my father's house are many mansions. If it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you. And if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you unto myself where I am. This is the way of God. To the beloved taken to the tabernacles is showing the terms of the kingdom of God. It is keeping all these things in mind that David sang the song. See how much is in this one verse? He is saying. Send out their light and their truth, Lord. Let them lead me. Let them bring me to the holy hill first. And secondly, take me to that tabernacle. When I am the God of the Lord, I will serve God. Verse 4, he says, then will I go into the altar of God and unto God my exceeding charge. Well, Jesus said that there are many habitations in my. And there is a great mansion prepared for us. Psalm 132. The Lord that chosen Zion to be his habitation. Because I have decided I will dwell here. And this is my habitation forever. Zion and Jerusalem are his habitations and this truth will lead us to that place. Psalm 84:1, how beautiful are that tabernacles of God. How amiable are their tabernacles of a lot of hosts. More than all the habitations of Jacob, the Lord desires of the habitation of Zion. When the light and truth are with you, they will lead you. When you walk in the light to fit, then it will bring you to the holy hill which is Zion and Jerusalem. How many of you decide to go to the tabernacles of God? How many of you desire to close your eyes? Lord, send thy light. Send thy truth, Lord. Even at those meetings, you send it to me. Let them lead me, Lord. No other person should lead me. Let that light and truth lead me. How many of you like to decide this? There are many failures by spirits which are leading you. You have walked in yourself and many failures have come. In your self-knowledge, you have gone under many failures. Going through the words of many of them, you have gone through many failures. Today, I will tell you that the light and truth are with you. Today, close your eyes, kneel down and say, God who led David in the light and truth in those days and let him perfectly lead that today lead on me. And in the Old Testament, you can read this. Only for two of them, they were confirmed in the others. Only for two of them. David and Daniel was confirmed of heaven. For the rest of them, they were running with a shortage that they will get. Not to say that they are not going to get. But the Lord confidently said that I will establish a house for you. You have been telling me about this, but I have not heard of it yet. I have not done anything else, but I have nothing else in this world. And David says, Lord, you have promised me from afar that you will build me a sure house and I do not want anything more than this and anything in this world. Secondly, Daniel says. You go until the end and rest. And I will raise you at the end. And you will receive your inheritance. What you have shown, that percentage will I give you. Both of them have finished their raising in the hall. You send the light. How many of you are going to pray like this? Let's close our eyes, kneel down and pray. Lord, send the light. Let's all close our eyes. Let's humble ourselves in the presence of God. Lord, send the light. How many of you need this light? You are hearing this message, but you know the darkness which is in your soul and how we are lamenting, the Lord is hearing. In the path of darkness, send the light. The Lord of struggle of sin. The struggle of sin is more in me. The struggles of flesh are increasing in me. I don't know how I will be delivered. I know this truth is purging the sins and delivering me of my sins, if it is so, send thy truth. Let them lead me, Lord. He the two have walked my own accord and walked according to it and many of them, I have been confounded. How many of you say like this? Lord, I have walked and walked and walked in darkness itself. Lord, please send the light. Send thy truth, Lord. Hereafter, let them lead me. Let them lead me hereafter. Let them take me to the holy hill. And let them lead me to the tabernacles. How many of you desire? All those who desire, if you repeat this verse sufficiently. There is no need for you to utter a great prayer, are you kneeling down? There is no need for a long prayer. You utter this word like David. What should you say? Lord, send thy light and truth. Let them lead me. And to the holy hill. And let them bring me to that tabernacle. Then will I come and enter you. I will enter into my God with exceeding charge. You keep repeating this prayer and the spirit of God will descend upon you that it might lead you. The light which you have thus far asked will come upon you. The power and life of that truth will come and descend upon you. By the lights of the Lord, you will lead hereafter. In this sinful world, you will live for the Lord. Lord, you lead me. All open your mouth and say, Lord, let the light lead me and let the truth lead me. When you are in the language of prayer, you are walking in the language of prayer. You are walking in the language of prayer. You are walking in the language of prayer. You believe in the Lord. You worship the Lord. The Lord will give you a message. When you are in the language of prayer, the Lord will give you a message. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Do not worry. Do not worry. Do not worry. Do not worry. Hallelujah. The Lord is walking in the language of prayer. The Lord is walking in the language of prayer. When you are in the language of prayer, you are walking in the language of prayer. You are walking in the language of prayer. Now, he is walking in the language of prayer. Now, he is saying, my son-in-law, you are not a good man. I will walk in the language of prayer. I will walk in the language of prayer. Do not worry. I will walk in the language of prayer. Do not worry. Hallelujah, amen. Amen. (Singing) My Savior, my Savior. My Savior, my Savior. (Singing) My Savior, my Savior. (Singing) My Savior, my Savior. (Singing) You are shining in my heart. 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 Hallelujah. When you are in the language of prayer, you are walking in the language of prayer. When you are in the language of prayer, you are walking in the language of prayer. You are shining in my heart. When I see your face, I will sing. (Singing) My Savior, my Savior. 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 (Singing) You are shining in my heart. 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 (Singing) My Savior, my Savior. 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 (Singing) You are shining in my heart. 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 Hallelujah, hallelujah. Do you know what he said? He said, the light and truth are the two angels. He said, you are leading me. When you are in the language of prayer, you are walking in the language of prayer. 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 Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Amen. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Dear people, there is a person in this community who is walking in the language of prayer. Why? He is walking in the language of prayer. Do not worry. When you are in the language of prayer, you are walking in the language of prayer. The Lord is speaking. He is walking in the language of prayer. Who am I afraid of? He is walking in the language of prayer. Who am I afraid of? Do you know this? (Singing) He is walking in the language of prayer. (Singing) He is walking in the language of prayer. (Singing) He is walking in the language of prayer. (Singing) Who am I afraid of? (Singing) He is walking in the language of prayer. (Singing) He is walking in the language of prayer. (Singing) Who am I afraid of? (Singing) He is walking in the language of prayer. Do not worry. Do not worry. Do not worry. Hallelujah. He is walking in the language of prayer. 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 Amen. Are we walking in the language of prayer? Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord. When we are in the language of prayer, we are walking in the language of prayer. When we are in the language of prayer, we are walking in the language of prayer. When we are in the language of prayer, we are walking in the language of prayer.